Chris.
Hey, we're gonna start because it's, uh, we have a presentation which is unusual for us, but I'm glad we are. So I'm gonna start and welcome, this is Longmont Housing and Courtesy Board of Inventions meeting, Tuesday, September seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. And we have a roll call. Can you start?
Commissioner Rodriguez.
Chair, Joan Packer.
Commissioner Suzy Lago-Fairin.
Commissioner Sean McCoy.
Lauren Sully, Assistant Director.
Holly Che.
Guest Andy Schwartz.
Guest Kristen Valtram.
Commissioner, Commissioner Marsha Martin.
Molly.
Molly. Roll call Molly.
Hello, thanks. This is Molly O'Donnell, Executive Director.
Tracy D. Francisco, Housing and Compliance Manager.
This is Daniels, and Supervisor.
Harold Vingas, Interim Executive Director.
Erin Mahorn, Executive Assistant.
Tim Hall, Assistant Chief.
Hey, we are waiting for two commissioners, Commissioner Shakita Yarborough and Commissioner Diane Christ. So we're gonna go immediately into review and approval of the August twenty, twenty twenty-four minutes. Can I have a motion?
Can I move the agreement as presented?
Second, been moved by Commissioner McCoy, second by Commissioner Lago-Fairin. Is there any discussion about the minutes? Seeing none, let's vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And that passes five to two with two commissioners, McCoy, no, you're here. Uh, who is missing?
Yarborough.
Yarborough and Chris, Commissioners Yarborough and Chris. We are now at public invited, we heard. Is there anybody in the public that would like to hear? Seeing no one, uh, we'll go into our new business now, which is a special presentation that we have tonight by Annie and Millie's Place. So, um...
Couple of Chris.
We're here.
We are, yeah, going fast, yes, yes.
I'm not even keeping up.
That's okay, that's... Do you have a presentation?
She is, she's plugging it in right now.
Ah, great.
Here, put it on.
He was the dean while I was in law school.
Yeah.
He was what?
I didn't see him.
Phil Wiseman was the dean of the Colorado Law while I was there.
Oh, really? Okay, um, do you want to introduce?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and just get started. So, um, do you prefer that I stand or sit?
Whatever's comfortable.
Whatever's comfortable, okay.
Yes.
Um, so my name is Kristen Valtram, I'm the founder and executive director of Annie and Millie's Place. You're gonna hear all about our program. I have with me my friend and my colleague, Andy Schwartz, who is with us to explain more about the role that he has. So Annie and Millie's Place is a resource for people experiencing homelessness who have pets. Our mission is to keep people experiencing homelessness together with their fur family by involving pet-friendly solutions programs and resources. So we started the program, I really began the research in fall of twenty twenty, and then we incorporated in January of twenty twenty-one. And since then, well, I want to tell you a little bit about who Annie and Millie are.
It's coming.
It's coming, okay.
So, um, while we're waiting, I just wanna say that I met with both Andy and Kristen, and we, uh, they explained who it was, and I asked them if they would present because as we were building places, knowing how animals connect with people, I think it's something that we should be thinking about going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, is that, I do see it, is that LHA to LHA? You go to that third slide?
Yeah.
And then run from there. There's our mission.
Yeah.
Mission is to keep people experiencing homelessness together with their fur family by involving pet-friendly solutions programs and resources. Next slide. So who is Annie? Annie is my sister, she's my older sister, and, um, we also have our younger sister Katie. Annie, whoop, back, please. Thank you. So that's, that's Annie and I together, that's our little sister Katie, and that's our mom Karen. So Annie is both a sister and a daughter. She's also the mother of Charlie, Casey, Sarah, and Sydney, and she's the grandparent of Ashlyn and Addison and Weston and Kason and Archer and RJ, if I remember. But this is Annie. She was the best dog mom to Millie. Annie and Millie together were living outside Louisville, Kentucky, when they were evicted from their apartment in twenty nineteen. When Annie went to receive emergency overnight shelter, she went there and said, "Hey, I need a place to stay, can't do that. Our family had put her up in hotels for a little while, not sustainable." So she went to the shelter, and they said, "You can come in, but your dog can't." So because Millie was Annie's one sole loyal companion, protector, provider, unconditional love, source of purpose, all the things, Annie had one choice available to her, which was to stay with Millie and sleep out of life. After seven months of sleeping in various parks and ditches, Annie did find an abandoned home that she squatted in, and it was there that she died by suicide. Millie was the only one there. I'm convinced that had Millie been allowed into the shelter with Annie that first night that Annie asked for help, that I would not be standing here today because Annie would still be alive, that she was connected to the services there. But when that trust was broken at the very first question, she walked away from all of those resources. So our mission, since we have, you can go to the next slide. What we've started, since we incorporated in January of twenty twenty-one, is four key programs. The first one is our outreach and supplies, that's where good Andy comes in. He's out three times a week between Longmont and Boulder with a backpack full of supplies, handing people what they need and building trusted relationships with them. We also provide pop-up clinics and sponsor the cost of emergency and urgent veterinary care. We last January put ten people and seven pets in hotels for five nights that one weekend when it was negative forty, because there was no place else to go. We did that lift in collaboration, Andy lifted that whole program in collaboration with the Boulder and Longmont outreach teams. And then we also coordinate temporary foster care. And that's where Andy's really gonna take it and run with you and tell you more about what that program is and how it applies here to LHA.
That's really to tie into why we're here, uh, since most of you work with people that are now housed. So first, let's talk about pet ownership. Anybody here have pets or had pets?
Yeah.
Uh, most people say hi to their pet before their partner or their kids. That's really the priority. So it's not much different for folks staying. I'm gonna focus mainly on the suites because that's your predominant TSH housing. Um, over the years, just my background, I've worked with folks for almost seven years running their outreach program. Uh, when I did get involved, obviously, in housing, because that was a big part of that outreach, getting people with the housing. Um, so I place people at the suites, I've had clients pass away at the suites, and I've had friends that I've met that lived at the suites, so pretty familiar with the way things work there. And it is great, yeah, because I do see people with pets there, uh, they take them outside, you can see that they actually congregate together. So having that pet does a couple of things for everybody, and it's great that you allow them, so many other programs don't. It brings this sort of physical comfort to people, it definitely brings a mental stress reliever to people, and it builds some community around them. So there's a lot of advantages to people having pets. The one thing, you know, generally, we looked at a lot of studies, and that increase in happiness really ranges anywhere from what I've seen, from forty to seventy percent. So I didn't want to just throw a random number up there because it's just so many different studies. But it can be, it's very obvious that people that have pets have a lot, much better mental status about how they feel, they don't feel as lonely. As my belief, everybody needs somebody, wants to take care of something and love something, and that pet provides that, that essential need. So if people want studies, we can help.
Yeah, we're more than happy to provide any information.
So this is what we've, we were able to help LHA and their clients earlier this year. I think it was probably in May, I might have been February, I think in February, we had a vaccine clinic at the suites. Uh, we heard there were about twenty animals that are unvaccinated, which, A, is not good for the animals, but we also, I believe that is a violation of LHA policy. So we were able to get sixteen of those pets vaccinated, we were able to provide some grooming and some nail care, and just other basic checkups on, on the pets that live there. Um, we did, I don't know how many, but we were able to provide some spayed and neutered vouchers for some of the dogs that were not spayed and neutered. We work predominantly with dogs and cats. Um, in my five-month span, I think, with Annie and Millie's, I've also had one snake as a client.
That's a head, yeah, and ferrets are, ferret service rats.
Yeah. So if somebody has sort of a more exotic pet, they're not excluded, it's just not what we focus on, but obviously, we still try to help. We are able to help with medical emergencies. Typically, we find medical emergencies run us between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty dollars per emergency. Um, that is a case-by-case basis. If it is palliative care or anything long-term, at this point, we're just not able to cover that. I mean, budget comes into play, I'm sure everybody here understands, budget constraints. Um, and we do provide everyday needs. I'm out there with food, leashes, harnesses. I'm not out there with cat litter mainly because of weight, but we do have it if somebody has a cat. Especially your local, we'd be able to maybe make an arrangement where we have maybe a monthly, you know, something monthly where people can come get supplies. We do help with ESA certification. Uh, we do not, right now, have a lot with CSA certification. If somebody really needed it, we'd figure it out. So, you know, we're really, we're flexible and able to help wherever it is needed. We try to, what's the difference? ESA is...
ESA is the emotional support animal, that just takes one meeting with the therapist who signed that letter. The certified service animal are the ones that usually provide some sort of medical assistance, and they're highly trained animals, it's very expensive.
So, and this is where I think we're gonna be able to, over the, over time, be able to really help, um, LHA help the most. We are building our foster program. That is something we're really hoping to have very robust by the end of the year. Um, so we wanna have a large pool of fosters that we have vetted, ideally ten dog, five cat fosters. Um, so that really, clients come in, and we notice they come in with medical problems, they come in with substance problems, they come in sometimes with incarceration that still needs to happen. But they won't do these things if they can't get their pet taken care of. It's, it becomes a barrier for them, it should not become a barrier. So we're looking to bridge that gap so people can take care of what they need to. I've seen simple, light problems turn into double amputations, and there was just no reason for that to happen. So we wanna, we will have a foster program. I'd like to work with case managers at LHA for that, instead of clients directly. I'm not against working with clients directly, but you know your clients best, and you have the trust, so that, that will, I think, works towards a quicker outcome. And we would then match the pet to the best foster situation. One of the reasons we want a pool of fosters is because there are different situations. If, you know, if the foster is, you know, seventy-two-year-old man or woman, they can't take care of two young pit bulls, it's just not gonna work. So...
But a ninety-year-old Chihuahua is perfect.
It's perfect. So we wanna have good matches between the fosters and the dogs. Um, the platform we're gonna be using will allow anonymous communication between the foster and the client. Um, it will be completely anonymous for protection of both. The foster's not gonna know why the client needs a foster, um, and same, the client's not gonna know where their animal is, but there will be anonymous communication. We, we can monitor that communication to make sure that there's nothing really inappropriate going on and, and take control if we need to. So we're very excited about that, and I really think that's where the biggest, where we really connect to what, you know, was happening at the suites. Uh, I'm sure we'll have something similar at Zinnia. And as our program grows, we'd really like to see this, you know, grow into other housing structures as well. And so I don't wanna be limited here, but it's a good place to start.
So co-sheltering is really a main goal, where people and their animal companion would be able to get that emergency overnight shelter together. There are a few models that are currently popped up since twenty twenty-two here in Colorado. Like I said, we started our work in twenty twenty-one, a couple of models around Colorado. Colorado has started, as well as across the nation, that we're connected to through a collaborative. I've toured many of them and am in regular conversation with many of the leaders of those organizations. So I have best practices to offer our community, including the one in Grand Junction, that's the pallid house model, which works fabulously, it's our favorite model of all of them, and, um, it's really possible to make that happen, especially since we know organizations are already using them, and so we can just pull some of that together, we don't need to reinvent the wheel for that. So there's some things that are happening. Our biggest goal, you can go to the next slide, is really just to be in partnership with our community, to fill the gaps and support what's already happening. We don't wanna duplicate anything, we just wanna support and expand all of you who are already doing such great work in our community. So we're here to be a resource for you. Thank you for letting us come and spend a few minutes of our time, your time with us. We appreciate it, thank you for the invitation. Do you have any questions for us right now?
Do you wanna tell them about your upcoming, uh, I don't even know what to call it. You said our pallet, or your, your...
My party, my thank you, my pet charrette.
Yeah.
If you're familiar, so we don't have a date set on the calendar, we're doing some negotiating with the space that we want to use, but if you're familiar with the term charrette, it's where stakeholders come together to really talk about and solve a problem. And so we're going to take one of our empty spaces here in Longmont, there's plenty of, and prop it out as if it was a co-shelter space. Then we're gonna invite leaders like you and other members of our community and our large partners across the nation, have them come. And then you'll each be given, uh, different colored post-it notes to write what you love about it, what your concerns are, and maybe some questions that you have. So we're really hoping to engage the entire community and help them through this problem with no risk, because we're not saying we're buying that particular building, we don't have to worry about any means yet. We're not saying we're totally gonna do this. We're saying we need to hear from our community first about what this process looks like and what our joys and concerns are about this program.
Thank you.
So you'll hear it from us as soon as we get that date set, you're getting the invitation, yes.
Right, right.
Any other questions, comments?
How long have we been collaborating, LHA, or has it started yet?
This is part of...
We just started.
This is part of initiating the conversation with the board.
Okay.
Uh, they started doing the vaccines.
Uh-huh.
And I just think operationally, what is it that you're looking for from the housing board?
This is, basically, right now, tonight, is about introducing ourselves, our program and our resources, and to be able to connect with you about what are your needs. If we need to have a second follow-up conversation, and maybe a smaller meeting with the task force, we wanna hear what it is you would need from us and help us determine how we've grown in the future. So this is just a chance to really introduce ourselves at this point.
And I think the real goal, I mean, you know, we do wanna help everybody get housed and co-sheltered, but we also wanna have housing retention numbers much stronger. We want people, once their house, to thrive and succeed and not end up back out on the streets.
That's where the overlap, I think, comes in.
You have a website that we can visit too.
Sure. I have my business card, it'll be here.
I have my sticker!
Did I sticker all my, like, posters?
And not to go, I mean, obviously, we're going to go here, are you looking for financial contribution or...
That would be a contribution that I think we could have. If the city was gonna rely on this, I think this is the rate, uh, yes, if you wanna pass these around or some of yours around. Um, the financial would really depend on what would the city need from us and what are we able to support. Right now, about twenty percent of our budget is coming from grants, and then the other eighty percent is coming from individual donors. So we do not have a large budget at this point. Most of our, uh, I would say probably about seventy percent of our budget is in our program, because that also includes Andy, Andy is our program and his outreach and everything that's involved in having an employee is on there as well. So as we're building, that's where the majority of our funds go. So if we're gonna expand our program, we would need some financial support, but we can talk about what that looks like and what, like, how that plays out.
This is very rough, so.
So for, for the commissioners, more from an operational perspective, um, this is... This is something that we've run into in terms of challenges, um, in terms of how often we need this, it's hard to say, but it is not uncommon for us, and I mentioned this, I think, before to Andy is, you know, when we look at permanent supportive housing within our housing structures, we do have individuals who would fall under permanent supportive, that may be in a thirty percent AMI unit somewhere else, and where it tend to show itself is in medical emergencies. I personally dealt with a situation where someone was having, um, really low blood sugar, and we called the ambulance, and the next thing you know, we realize we have a pet. And then trying to catch in and at least get some verbal permission to get in and have somebody take possession of the pet. And so these are real issues that we deal with with our tenants, and so I think, um, from an operational perspective, there is a need to figure out some type of relationship.
Like quit, I don't know, we don't have a name for it yet, but crisis fostering, like somebody who's living outside, gets taken to jail and has a pet. Haven't figured out how that's exactly gonna work, but that's where I would put something like that. I don't have a, a name for it.
The very, the very first foster that we had was somebody who we built a relationship with through our clinic. He was taken to jail. Um, when, when a pet owner goes to jail, then their pet is not with their owner, and therefore, it's stray. So he had four days to figure out who was going to get his dog while he's in jail. So, um, it's really hard to figure, like, to me, that's a justice issue.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, but he, there was the resting officer, he was very nice and allowed him a phone call that he made to me and called the, he was, the dog was actually at the Landmark Humane Society, gave me permission to pick the dog up. I then picked the dog up and then brought the dog into foster, and then they were reunified, and he would get out just four days later. But he would have lost his pet.
That is a look we'd like to see. It probably would involve working with the Humane Society, public safety, I think there'd be multiple avenues.
Yeah, multi-avers.
Yeah.
Sure.
And we're gonna have the same problem in Boulder. I mean, no matter, it's, I'd like a similar process across both townships, but...
From a landlord's standpoint, when we have someone approved, we're technically pet-free communities, except for at Harston Lodge, because there are under, there are a lot of pet pets. But when we have emotional support animals or other, uh, service animals approved, we usually have them fill out information so that there's a designated alternate caretaker within the community or somewhere, but that's not always a given. It doesn't always get updated, so having, having an optional foster situation would be good.
Yeah, we're your resource as well as the client themselves.
Because if the, if the designated caretaker says, "I can watch this dog for a month," what are we gonna do?
Yeah, and this'll tie into our enabling care in communities, so, you know, I think we target all the sales force actually have the platform. In the time we've been working over here, they've built it. So we'll have a situation that we can communicate with each other internally, um, and even public safety can communicate in that. And so in terms of the right permissions, we wanna test this within our housing and boarding tenants so that they create, they will have the release form, and we can ask questions like, if this, then this. And so there may be some options to, to look at that, so, um, if commission's interested in this, we can definitely continue our research from an operational perspective.
Yeah, it's important. And then even looking at the neighborhood, so when you were talking about the Humane Society and public safety, but also our neighborhood impact teams, if they come across or looking to, I'm thinking of weather, you know, since it's a crisis or a health, somebody's having a health concern, that our public safety then can connect with you in the event that they have a dog or a cat. Or a very bad, but...
Yeah.
Love to be part of all those conversations, so now then, to address the issues.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate you guys.
Feel free to reach out with any other questions.
Okay.
We're available.
Yeah, we're available. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Enjoy the rest of your meeting and your evening. Thank you, thank you, take care. Oh, yeah. Good to see you.
So, um, for the record, I'd like to say that the commissioners Diane Christ and Shakita Yarborough have entered the meeting. Gonna move on now to, uh, we have a resolution, LHA twenty twenty-four eighteen, approved revised suite supportive housing tenant selection plan. And is this, turn it over to Molly.
Mm-hmm.
Molly, thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Um, so we've talked about this one a few times. We introduced it back in, in the spring, I think in May, um, about how we were working through the Zinnia tenant selection plan process and the suites revisions to the tenant selection plan at the same time. Um, Zinnia has been adopted, the LHA general plan has been updated and adopted, and we finally did get DOH confirmation that the edits that we made were acceptable for the suites. Um, and so the suites is now ready to get adopted. Uh, we've been implementing the new tenant selection plan as far as it relates to pulling from the local case conferencing, the coordinated entry program rather than the state's one homeless. We've been doing that even, um, without DOH's formal sign-off on this tenant selection plan because that is the direction that they gave us. Um, but otherwise, it does do a lot of cleanup items as well, which we went over in more depth here in the spring, and I won't repeat unless anyone has questions. Um, but it just kind of modernizes it, makes it much more clear, and distinguishes it from our general tenant selection plans used at other properties. So I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Molly?
Seeing no, then we need a motion to approve a revised...
I move resolution, uh, LHA twenty twenty-four dash eighteen.
Second. Did we move by Commissioner McCoy, sent by Commissioner Yarborough. Uh, any discussion? Seeing no, oh, all of you there?
Aye.
Aye. Marsha, can you hear us? Is it? Okay, um, we're voting on this resolution. Do you accept it? I didn't hear you.
I didn't hear anybody vote, sorry.
Oh, we all said aye.
All of you in the papers say aye. Aye!
Aye, okay.
All opposed. That passes unanimously. Uh, we're gonna move on to the transfer status, update resolution, LHA twenty twenty-four nineteen. Is this you, Molly, again?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, we've been talking about this one for several years. Um, when the city and the LHA first came under the same umbrella in twenty twenty, one of the first things that was done is we brought in a special counsel to check out, um, the assets that LHDC held as the general partner in the tax credit partnerships, um, and determined at that time, because LHDC was kind of on a, a wind-down track, because LHA, at the time that it partnered with the city, was not really picking up new developments, and that's really what LHDC's main role was at the time. Um, and so a special counsel did say that it would be advantageous to transfer the general partner interest from LHDC to LHA on the several properties that, um, that they have their name. Those include Fall River, Spring Creek, Carston Lodge, and Crispin One. Um, so we determined that Carston and Lodge will be taken care of with, when we exit the two-two program, which is in our, in our development project pipeline for the next couple of years. Um, Fall River, we already went through and determined that it was not possible to remove LHDC because it needed to have a five-one-C-three nonprofit involved in the ownership structure, and we didn't have an alternative to swap them out with, so they're gonna hang on to that. And then Spring Creek and Crispin One is what we're gonna talk about tonight. Um, while in those several years that we were working on this, uh, we have been continuing to work with LHDC, they continue to support our development projects, including Ascent and Village on Main, and, um, they are, they're, they are still a three-person board. That was one challenge several years ago, was recruiting new board members. They are still interested in supporting LHA, and we have determined that having a five-one-C-three nonprofit arm attached to LHA is very advantageous, not only on the development side, but to be able to accept donations. Um, and, and that is something that we'd like to broaden and expand in the future, that role. So they're with us, LHDC is with us for the long haul, um, specifically to play that nonprofit role and for sure for Fall River. Um, so the first resolution we have here, this is the transfer of the general partner interest for Spring Creek Apartments from LHDC to LHA. Um, your, your board and the LHDC board gave us permission to go ahead and move forward with this one. Um, it was a relatively simple process and transaction, it just took some time to get the consent that we needed from the investor and, um, the banks and DOH, all who put money in and have loans into the deal. Um, so this is the third of the five, this is the first one going forward. Um, three total will go forward in time. So, um, really, this just swaps out LHDC as the general partner with LHA because LHA still manages of both the financials and whatever, um, debt repayment, et cetera, that the, that the projects have. It won't really change anything on the ground. It might just be a change in accounts, but Pedro can always pipe in and tell me, um, more specifics. But it really won't be a, a major change to how we do our daily business, but on paper, we will... But on paper, we will be holding the loans and the guarantee and still running the property as is normally at the site with real estate. Kendra, is there anything on the accounting side that we should specify on that?
Well, I was pulling up other information, so like...
You guys are away too much, why don't we... Cap videos.
Cap videos.
Were we talking about Zinnia? Oh, yes, yes. So would that transfer you?
Yes.
Most of the loans would then also transfer to the LHA side. So, yeah.
Which is still Kendra.
So we have, and Diana, we've been talking about LHDC for a couple of years, actually. Do you have, do you have any questions about what it is?
I do have questions.
Well, go ahead and ask.
So I hear that the advantages are that LHDC has a charitable organization. But LHA is managing the debt and then with the transfer be holding the loans as well. So are there any other advantages to transferring these assets? Looking, I'm looking at...
Who, on which side?
On LHA's side because...
So, kind of, I wanna rewind it a little bit. One of the things we were looking at is that LHDC had funding that we were gonna transfer over to LHA's side. As we were working through that, you know, what we also realized is, A, there's properties where we can't do it because of the nonprofit status. We know we need a donation arm in with the work that we're doing. And so B, I think from a control standpoint, when we look at it, it's easier with Spring Creek when it gets to this point for us just to manage it versus having these two ancillary units that are in play. There's also tax things that will creep up with LHDC occasionally. I just think generally it's easier to operate it when it's on LHA's books. Now, part of why, and Molly helped me with this because I'm going back a few years of memory, part of why LHDC was created, because when that, when the housing authority structure was created many, many years ago, there were some limitations in terms of whether or not housing authorities could actually develop properties. And in the case of Longmont, they didn't want the housing authority to develop properties. So they created the Longmont Housing Development Corporation to fulfill that gap in this. Those limitations no longer exist. And so that's why you're seeing the housing authority being front and center in the development of some of these projects. It is, they do have funding that we can bring in to other development agreements. So in addition to sitting on the executive director of this, I'm also the interim executive director of LHDC, we're doing the work for them at the same time. So when we're looking at development projects and they have money in the bank, we've, we've run loans in and out from LHDC. So we're not taking money from LHA or from the affordable housing fund. So on the front end of the projects, they'll loan us a half a million dollars for pre-development costs. We then pay them back the half a million dollars on the closing of the project. So we're not tapping LHA general fund balance or we're not tapping the affordable housing funds of the city. So it's essentially another financing arm for what we're doing.
Where does the LHDC get their money? Is it from private donors or is it without government?
At the moment, they don't get any money. They were getting the developer fees. When the projects happened, they were getting the developer fees. And then there was kind of an agreement to pay LHA a particular corporate fee because they were the ones actually orchestrating most of the work that went into those developments. But now we're kind of switching gears with LHDC because they are a true tax-exempt title entity that to use that for more residential services. So for example, the contract for V F is with LHDC. And LHDC, V F provides transportation services to our properties. So that's one type of service now that LHDC has. We haven't tapped into the other resources that it could probably do. But LHDC is kind of an entity that the money received really needs to come from more nonprofit and city organizations because it is a 501(c)(3). It can give private donations, but you have to pass, pass a test to make sure that all your private is not overstepping the bounds. And you lose your taxes status. So that's kind of where LHDC is right now. So they have a bunch of investments that came either through developer fees in the past. And or, you know, Spring Creek actually paid LHDC quite a bit of money for their land loan. Because they're actually one of the best properties in, in this situation because they got a lot of DR funds. And they don't have a lot of other funding. They didn't have a mortgage. Their mortgage is DR funds, which is, you know, $25,000 every year. And Spring Creek actually pays that to LHDC. LHDC pays that to DRH. So they're kind of in the best financial position because they don't have the huge mortgage that most of the other state...
Now, the other reason we kind of talked about keeping them in play is for a while we had community housing development organizations or CHODs. There was a time when they were really involved and then it just sort of went where they're not in play as much. We're starting to see that that may be a vehicle that we need to see used down the road because you're seeing resurgence in Alpha 2 was CHODs. And so that was the other reason, because they were at CHOD at one point and it chose not to be. So we could actually convert it back into if we needed to for a project.
So the disadvantage is that when you take these assets, you're also taking the loans, the debt along with it. Is that kind of putting them together in one problem? It's like keeping it simple? Is that what I'm hearing?
We would take on, yeah, so the debt that LHDC has is the loan to DOH. And what comes in, Spring Creek pays the interest on that loan, but with DOH, there is no interest. So what they pay is just fully paying down the loan. Whereas Spring Creek is accumulating interest on that loan that would be due back or written off if, you know, once they're through resublocation, that tends to happen.
So the concern is, doesn't that kind of break down the line between where does it go? Does it go to LHDC or does it go to LHA? It seems like the accounting might get a little muddy with their...
It seems like...
It seems like the accounting might get a little muddy having that those kinds of LHA.
Well, Spring Creek's money is due back to LHDC. So all of it's on LHDC's books, it would just be switching to LHA.
There's loans that LHDC is making in the project that will be paid back, but there's no... LHDC hasn't taken on any debt. Project does. LHDC itself hasn't taken on any debt for these projects. The project has taken on debt and has loaned money into, just in the same structure that LHA does into our projects. Or we loaned money into the project itself. So we will be taking on those loans, LHA will be taking on those loans if you don't ask for the resolution tonight. But there is a guarantee that goes with that where there is some, some risk from the legal guarantee for the loans the project made because the LHDC sponsored the project and guaranteed for the project. So that, that risk will come over to LHA.
The payments on all those loans and all the responsibility for holding the guarantee on the project, it's still wrapped up in the property. The property still pays its own way. It's just either in this case, currently LHDC is responsible for paying them and through our management fee, we exercise it on our behalf and make whatever payments are necessary and manage all the financials of the property. And so it's really, it's actually eliminating an extra step when it comes to the day-to-day business. It does move the risk, which, Tim, I would say is low on this property. It's been stabilized for some time, to LHA. However, even if it was with LHDC, if there was a problem, LHA would be heavily involved.
Yeah, we're sort of embedded in the risk anyway because you have operations and maintenance on the facility. So it's not, the only risk that we're absorbing is, is really facility-related. But yeah, because we're the, we're the operating maintenance entity, we still have to make sure that the building's operational. So I would argue, I don't think we're absorbing any more risk because we're the ones charged with making sure the building is in good shape.
And there we are.
Which is a good, the positive side. So Diane, Commissioner, Commissioner Chris. Because we still have a whole packet, perhaps you could have a one-on-one with either Tim or Harold or Molly.
Well, I just have one other question, which is, is the, is it in a cash positive situation?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
Is it in a cash positive situation? And I mean, partly so, marginally so, how would you...
I would say positively so because they pay, you know, a really good chunk back to LHDC, about $200,000. Because they, they had cash surplus. So, yeah.
Great, so you do need to move resolution 2024-19. I'll move resolution, LHA 2024-19.
Second.
It's the move by Commissioner Hidalgo Ferring, seconded by Commissioner McCoy. All those in favor? Let's say aye. Aye. All those opposed? That passes unanimously. And now we're gonna go on to Crispin One, or did you cover that, Molly?
I'm just, it's just a brief statement. That is the last one to move. Other than the Harston and Lodge will essentially take care of themselves. Crispin One, we were directed to go ahead and move forward with that. However, in approximately 2028, when we take over Crispin One and Two from NGL, we'd have to do essentially the same thing anyway. So it was advantageous for many reasons to just hold until about 2028 and take care of it all at once. So if the commissioners would like us to go ahead and change that direction, we can. But the recommendation really is just to hold until 2028 so we don't have to just incur attorney fees early when we're gonna have to revise it.
So you just need direction, not necessarily a motion? So...
Yes.
Okay, great. I personally say keep on the path you're going. Because it's working.
It's just saying, it's just because, well, be clear, when LHDC wanted to dissolve, we had to untangle. They're now not wanting to dissolve. They're engaged with us in what we're doing. So we don't have to untangle, therefore we don't want to untangle it until we transfer it to avoid a duplication of legal fees.
Okay.
That's just, that's the situation.
Same way. So all of you who agree that we should just keep on the path we're going with the commissioners, can we just raise your hands, yes? Okay, that's the direction. Keep on, keep it on. Housing Choice voucher program?
That's me.
Yep. Resolution, LHA 2024-20, approved housing choice voucher five-year administration plan.
So HUD requires us to do a five-year plan. And it only has to do with the Housing Choice voucher program. And in this plan, we set out goals and then report on our achievement from the previous five-year goals. It really hasn't changed very much from last year. It's, you know, we'll, we'll still go out for as much funding as we can if it's available. We will continue to, to do what we're doing now. We also put in here that any time there is an opportunity to put project-based vouchers onto a project that makes sense, that we would do that. And then again, it just reports back on what we've accomplished from last year, which we accomplished everything we said we were going to, except we didn't have anything to really apply for. We did get five new vouchers, but other than that, there was nothing to...
That's great. So the plan is staying pretty much the same?
So, yeah. So I have a question. I know in the, in the plan, it stated, I know towards the end, I know you all said that this will be considered as a public notice, today's meeting, right? Would do...
A public hearing.
Public hearing. So do you also like post these up on, in the properties as well? Like the full plan so that if anyone disagreed with the plan, that they, so that you can have those comments? Because...
I think it's posted online.
Yeah, it was on, it was on our website. HUD doesn't require, I'm, under the, like, the CDVG program, there's, there's really a lot of regulations on public participation. This doesn't require it to be put in the paper. That's the only thing that we just didn't do, other than...
But I was just asking if you posted...
It's on our website.
But you don't print them out and like post it somewhere where somebody want to read it, just right there, may not, they may not have...
Yeah, because it's the voucher program, those are scattered. So it's kind of hard to just, to, to find those people. The only thing that we could do next year is do a mailing with a little notice that, that this is coming up. And if they wanted to comment, that they could find it on our website. Wouldn't, I wouldn't...
Yeah.
But that might be a possibility next, next year.
I would like that.
Okay.
That would make me happy.
Yeah, that probably makes me happy. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions about 2024-20? Any other commissioners want to comment? See, all right, seeing that that's, I need a motion then, or is...
I move LHA, have resolution, LHA 2024-20.
Second. It's the move by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Yarro. Marcia, I, I heard her just because she's sitting next to me. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. That was unanimously approved. Now, are the, so are the voucher funding updates the same as what you just gave us? Okay. Been around the voucher updates.
That's you. That's you, voucher funding updates.
So... There's really not an update right now, other than we have put the information in for the shortfall funding that we talked to you all about at the last meeting. Kendra is keen to see if they have any information for us, it's not a hard problem. But we did get a new HUD staff person that reached out to us for a meeting so we could just get together and talk to each other. So I think they're working to schedule that soon. And I think in that meeting, we'll be able to have more information.
We have...
It's Thursday.
We have it scheduled for Thursday.
Okay, so there you go.
Is that, is that at the state, of the state level or federal level?
Federal level. So we're in the system for the shortfall funding. We're just now wanting to see where we are and what we're gonna get, so, if we get anything.
We will. We will. Positive thinking.
Positive thinking.
Okay, you don't need anything from us on that, it's just an update. So we're gonna go to interim executive director report?
Yeah, based on time, so now I'm gonna jump in on this. So I think, you wanted to do a quick update on Zinnia, where we are leasing?
Yeah, we're leasing, we're making great progress. They plan on move-ins at the beginning of October. And the entire team altogether, which also includes MHP, All Roads, which was Boulder Shelter, and the developer group are really on a good stride and got a good system in place to get it leased up.
So the thing about this project that we're gonna be watching pretty close because Sarah's also, Sarah Armies working with Boulder, because Boulder Police have somewhat of a similar relationship, is one of the unique things that they did at Bluebird... somewhat of a similar relationship, is one of the unique things that they did at Bluebird and are going to do here, and frankly, it's one of the challenges on housing retention, is there, one of the rules in place on Xenia is that the first six months that you're living there, you can't have a visitor. And we're going to be watching that pretty close because one of the challenges that we see in permanent supportive housing is in housing retention, is that first six months is pivotal in terms of stabilizing. And a lot of times what we've seen historically is when we move someone in, within the first six months, and I don't know if you've seen it recently more.
We have new tenants at the suite sneaking people in and out constantly.
So they start sneaking people in and out. You know, we've had a couple instances where they'll bring their friends in. One of the highest math tests that we've turned occurred within less than a month of somebody moving into the facility. And so what we're hearing is that that's working really well at Bluebird. So we're going to watch Xenia and how that worked. We may actually want to come back with some adjustments to the suites and replicate that there because that's really, that first six months of stabilizing people is probably the most critical that we have. So that was just a piece I wanted to touch on here. I literally just signed the closing documents on Ascent about an hour and a half ago. So they'll be getting those in to close what day? Is that going to close?
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth. So that'll be closing and they literally will probably go under construction in the next couple of days after closing. They're probably, well, I mean...
I think they're already there.
Are they already there? I mean, we mobilize, you mobilize fast once you close because you don't want to continue accruing interest on the loans. So that's good news. All of that aside, and that'll be done this week. That's the last big project that we have going forward right now. I do want to talk to you about a couple of things. Kendra, can you bring up the fund balance sheet? So we're going to be bringing you the budget in October. I wanted to throw something out to you all because one of the things that we're starting to see, so when you look at what we're dealing with, we have the resuscitation, we just looked at Village on Main, we're bringing Xenia on, and then we have Ascent coming online. And so when we look at this, there's, there's a lot of workload that's coming into play. So, and she zooms in on this. This is the fund balance that we created to show you what we were looking at in terms of how we were managing fund balance over time and how that was working into the operational component of the Housing Authority general fund. Now, what we pointed out when we did this the last time is that it, on the housing authority side, it's a little bit different than the city side in that you have, we have been and they have been living off of development fees as they've been coming into the system. What we talked about is we want to wean ourselves off of just solely relying on the development fees. And so for 2025 budget coming in, we projected that we were going to need a transfer from the fund balance of 1.1 million dollars. What you're actually seeing in there is we think, and that was as of a day ago, a day or two ago, we think we're only going to have to transfer 943,000 dollars out of that into the operating fund or the housing authority, which is a success in that we're not having to transfer as much out of the fund balance as we thought we were going to do. So when we talk about it, we talk about the fact that what, what I'm watching is this number here because it's indicating when we need to have the next project coming in so you can get those revenues into the fund balance so that you can continue that in the future. So if you kind of look here, but actually the adjusted fund balance, this is from Ascent where we're adding those revenues into that stream. So then we look at the adjusted fund balance. So what it's telling me is right in here, we need to have another project come forward in order to rebuild those fund balances. And working with Kendra, so what we did is there, one of the things we've never had is reserve in our fund balance in terms of the three-month operating reserve, 22%. So we've allocated that operating reserve here. So that's essentially becomes a restricted fund balance that we only use in cases of emergencies. When we bring you the budget, I'm going to add another two months into that. And so essentially what we'll have is a five-month fund balance. And then this just becomes the unrestricted fund balance that we have for the housing authority, which if you remember a few years ago, this is a much different picture financially than what we're dealing with. So a couple of things that we built, can you scroll down? So what we've also done is you can see where I'm setting some targets that are highlighted in yellow in terms of setting goals, in terms of continuing to reduce the drawdown on fund balance over time. Now, I will tell you, this is, these are pretty significant adjustments for a budget that's a million dollars. But in a fund balance, it's under a million, but you can see what it's, how it's shifting that fund balance over time. Development will come into it in terms of the ongoing revenue fees. The reason why I'm talking to you about this is in the budget for next year, we're proposing an additional maintenance position and we're proposing an additional accounting position because of workload. So that's within the 943. So if you think about it, we're adding two positions, we're reducing the transfer, what we projected. So that's a fairly significant swing financially, but we're overwhelmed in work. And overwhelmed to the point we need immediate relief. So I asked Kendra to look at, well, what would it cost if we wanted to try to go ahead and hire the maintenance position and the accounting position now so we can get it on board? And if we did that in, you know, soon, we could get a start date in November, that's $42,000. Not asking for a decision now, I'm just wanting you all to think about that because when we present the budget, that's going to be a question that we're going to ask you, is to say, can we open up those two positions to get them hired sooner rather than later? Worst case, it would draw an additional $42,000 down. Probably realistically, it'd be half of that because it would only be one month. But this is a preview of the budget, what we're trying to accomplish.
Personally, I would like to see those positions hired before you start another project because you're just working too hard, I guess.
Well, and for context, we're down to meet those people right now.
Oh, you are already?
Yeah, we have one on FMLA and caregiver leave and then another one we're dealing with. So yeah, it's an interesting time period. But so we'll talk about not asking for a decision. I just wanted to kind of put that in your mind so we can talk about it because we will be asking for direction moving forward. The other thing in this is, do I think those yellow numbers are realistic? Absolutely. I think they're realistic. What we're talking about is re-envisioning how we do projects. And so one of the things that Lauren's informed us about, but we're housing partners, is they actually do projects where they intermean with market rate and with affordable. So if you remember when we talked about attainable housing on the rental side and affordable, this is where we were talking to you all about if we can get a direct allocation out of the 1B funds. What it does is it lets us look at a different financing model that when you bring the attainable housing units in, you actually spend more cash out. And so if we can get one or two projects like that, it could, within a seven-year period, set the stage to be over cash flow positive over time. And so we will be talking to you all about that over the next few months.
Is debt IZO anyway? I mean...
It is. It is IZO. And but it's, we're waiting on a decision from the county in terms of the 1B funding because we really need that dedicated funding to take, to solve the debt ratio issue. Although our fund balances, if we wanted to be uber-aggressive, probably can solve that now. But we don't want to do that.
Once again.
But we don't want to do that because if you look at it and you said if we needed to move to hit a 1.25 or 1.3 when you're using the debt, you know, that's between a million and a million and a half. And so if you look at, let me scroll up. If you look at that number adjusted in the fund balance, we're really close to that. But that's too much risk to absorb. Your margins become too tight in terms of doing that. So we really need that direct allocation to help bridge it.
Did you say 42,000?
For the two positions for two months. That's a fully loaded cost.
For 2024. The others will be built until 2025.
It's built in the 2025.
It's not an accountant doing maintenance work too. I'm just...
No. It is a maintenance technician and an accountant. So it's two positions for two months. That's it.
So you got, are we going to do occupancy and property effects?
It's settled.
That's it. Do you have a motion, Tricia?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner McCoy, seconded by Commissioner Chris. Tricia, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those pose.